Stay over, Brian, all right? I need the ass, because I really do. Because I cannot resist them.
I love dinner, quarters.
Me, too.
Yes.
Hello, everybody. We will welcome you here today on December 23rd. And please stand for the invitation, followed by the question. Before we begin this prayer, I found from one of my council members that a former council member passed. And we want to make sure that we keep him in our prayers, in his family, in his prayers, et cetera. We also want to be sure that we keep our Jewish community in our prayers as well. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to serve you. We thank you for all you've done for us. And we pray that you will be blessed for those who have families in bereavement. We ask that you be with our friends in Israel. Please take care of the children and the mothers, the wives, the families who in harm's way. We ask for peace and blessing and harmony. We ask also for the good things to come back to our communities, for us to love one another and have peace and charity. We thank you for the sunshine. And we thank you when we do have rain, Lord. We thank you for a small blessing on our land and our parks and our grounds, and as well as the city of Greenville, all the things that we have been trying to do. We ask that you will bless each family represented in this room. We pray for them to be safely as they leave this place. We ask you to continue to keep us in your care. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember John DeWorke. Councilmember Lillian Fleming.
Here.
Councilmember Ken Gibson. Councilmember Roy Brasington. Councilmember Russell Stahl. Councilmember Dorothy Dow.
Here.
Mayor Knox White. Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Here. Okay. We have two people who signed up to speak to us this evening. Please state your name. And begin with Mr. Joe Farmer.
Ma'am, as he's coming up to speak, can we go ahead and do an approval of the minutes?
Okay.
Second.
All right, who said?
I did.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
You want to post?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Farmer.
Thank you. I'm here to speak about the Historic Review Board. They met last Thursday to consider RHP 23623. This was a preliminary certification for special tax assessment for rehabilitated historic properties. They discussed awnings. They discussed a mural. They discussed a display. Neither the applicant nor the board ever mentioned taxes or assessment, and they approved it. There was zero discussion about the topic at hand. Additionally, they advised the applicant, because he doesn't have a final plan, that if he needed to make any changes, he needed approval of two board members. They didn't specify if it was by text, email, phone, Facebook, smoke signal. While in Section 2-507 Meeting Procedure, Paragraph F, Subsection 2, states specifically that when an application is deferred for modifications, which this one was not, the chairperson shall appoint two board members to apprise the applicant of design issues that should, meaning they tell him, not he tells them, be changed to comply with the standards established for the evaluation of the application. Furthermore, in Subsection 40-151, Paragraph C, substantive changes. Once a preliminary certification is granted, which it was, to an application, substantive changes must be approved by the HRB. This board doesn't know how to run a meeting. And they're making decisions on taxes and assessments. This board was scheduled to meet at 3:00 PM. Two members of the five were there at 3:00 PM. A third joined shortly thereafter, and they waited until the fourth arrived to begin the meeting. The fifth was absent. Additionally, after the staff gave a report and the applicant stated his, they failed to ask for public comment. Fortunately, the staff called them before the discussion ended and told them they needed to have a public comment period. This board needs to be retrained, especially if they're going to debate taxes. There's no oversight of them. Now, two things need to happen. And I'd like to know, who is going to notify the applicant that two members cannot approve changes, that any changes need to come back before the court? And who's going to notify the board that they need to go through training on how to run a meeting? They seem to be knowledgeable about the historic value, but they have no idea on how to run a meeting. And for something to be held at 3:00 on Thursday that's discussing tax amendments for 10 years, $2 million a year, they're decreasing the assessment. Somebody needs to tell them, and I want to know who to tell.
Sir, that's not a question that you can ask the council, because it's not our responsibility to do that, to supervise that committee. We'll have someone from the city's manager's office that can answer that question for you later on, or our attorneys will be able to answer that question. But that's not something that any of us can answer, because we don't supervise them directly. Thank you so much. Next person, Mr. Gibbons. Andrew Gibbons.
As I said, my name is Andrew Gibbons. I live with my wife and three children at 100 Wedge Drive. I won't start these brief comments, but thank you for serving and serving for all the city. And also thank the city's staff for serving. I will travel around the country. I tell people I'm from Greenville, South Carolina. All I get is compliments. That's a great place to live. I read about you in a magazine this week. And a large part of those comments are because of what the city council and the staff do. So I want to thank you for that. I come today to speak in opposition of the Union House Development on Rutherford Road that the council and the city staff should all know about at this point. Through loopholes, legalese, and a lack of common sense, this development, as of now, is going forward. I won't go into facts or numbers of the development, as you probably all know about them. But it's essentially four buildings with six private bathrooms, with six private master bedrooms, providing at the moment a total of eight parking spots. Again, 24 bedrooms with a total of eight parking spots for 24-plus people. In recent months, the developer signed an affidavit with the city that stated that it would be single-family household homes. But in the last months, this development's status has turned into one discussion about affordable living, what constitutes a boarding house, and other definitions discussions that, in short, have been comical. At the end of the day, properties like this are not permitted within R6, and yet, here we are. I'm a normal citizen who pays his taxes, votes, follows the rules, and looks out for his neighbors. Speaking today in front of the council is something I actually don't enjoy when I'm going to spend Monday night doing. I decided to come today and speak to you because we have a local developer who seems not to care one bit about the neighborhood zoning rules. He isn't following the rules in place. He doesn't seem to care how this will affect the current neighbors. I'm asking you to do two things tonight after this meeting and making one personal plea. First thing is I'm asking you to look at this copy of the signed affidavit the developer did with the city. The second thing I'm asking to do is, after you read the affidavit, look at the project. That's all I'm asking. The plea I'm asking for personally, though, is I'm speaking on behalf of my neighborhood, but also all the communities across Greenville that do not know what this BZI board did last week, all the unintended consequences of it. I appreciate your time, and thank you for serving.
Thank you so much. All right, recognitions and appointments of our boards and commissions. Right. ATAX Committee.
Mayor Pro Tem, if we could review the service appreciation agenda first, please.
Sure. I'll take that. I'd like to say a few words in appreciation of those who have served for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Christopher Price has served since January of 2015. Christopher, I think you're here. Please, thank you for your service. And I'd also like to thank Seth Wonder, who has served since January of 2016. And I don't think Seth didn't hear, I don't think. Thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming, I'd like to recognize some members who served on the Community Development Advisory Committee. Kevin Mertens, I did not see him here. Kevin, are you here? Kevin Mertens has served since November of 2019, and he'll be coming off of that board, as well as Scott May. Scott May here? Scott May also served since November of 2019. So they'll be coming off the Community Development Advisory Committee, and we thank them for their service. Additionally, we have some members here who have served faithfully on the Green Ribbon Advisory Committee that are coming off. Jody Hyacinth, I see you here. Jody has served for a long time.
Stephanie Carley.
Stephanie Con.
Mary Rash.
Is Mary here? I don't see Mary. All three of them, we thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so very much. I appreciate that, starting with the thank you first, and then we'll go on to our appointments. So let's look at the ATAX Committee. Councilmember DeWorke.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Excuse me. Still getting over a call. The recommendation of the reappointment of William Groves for lodging and Joshua Riley from lodging, Joshua Riley from hospitality, for a full two-year term, each beginning November 1, 2023, and ending October 31, 2025. And also, do I go into the next recommendation?
You can.
Also recommend the reappointment of Mary Hip, representing Metropolitan Arts Council, and Dave Edwards, representing Visit Greenville SC, each to a one-year term, beginning November 1, 2023, and ending October 31, 2024.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations hearing that close? All those in favor of the recommendations from Councilmember DeWorke, please say aye. All right, anyone says nay? Okay, so combination tax advisory committees approved. Firefighters pension fund, Board of Trustees, Councilmember Dow.
Mayor Pro Tem, I recommend the appointment of Kevin Mertens to an unexpired term, ending October 31, 2025.
Any other recommendations? Any other? Last call. Any other recommendations? If not, all those in favor of the recommendation of Kevin Mertens to the firefighters pension fund, Board of Trustees, please say aye. Anyone oppose? If not, Kevin Mertens is approved. Greenville Transit Authority, Councilmember Dow.
I also would like to recommend the reappointment of Sean Rusnak to a full three-year term, beginning November 1, 2023, and ending October 31, 2026.
Okay, thank you. And any other recommendations for the Greenville Transit Authority? Going once. Any other recommendations? Going three times. All those in favor of the reappointment of Sean Rusnak to the Greenville Transit Authority, please say aye. Anyone oppose? If not, this is approved. The Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee, Councilmember Gibson.
I'd like to recommend reappointment of Pamela Sims and Reverend Sam Zimmerman, each to a full two-year term, beginning November 1, 2023, and ending October 31, 2025.
Okay, any other recommendations? Any other recommendations? Hearing none? Last time, any other recommendations? The Richland Cemetery Advisory Committee reappointment of Pamela Sims and Reverend Sam Zimmerman. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, so that's approved. Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilmember Brasington.
Mayor Pro Tem, I've got three individuals bringing forward. The first, a reappointment of Mr. Mark Harrow for a full three-year term, running from November 1, 2023, through October 31, 2026. Second, the appointment of both Sam Davis and Matthew Prater for full three-year terms, beginning November 1, 2023, running through October 31, 2026.
Okay, hearing those two recommendations. Any other recommendations? Any other recommendations? Last call. Any other recommendations? All right, Board of Zoning Appeals, the recommendations of Mark Harrow for a full three-year term, and the recommendation to appoint Sam Davis and Matthew Prater to a full three-year term, please say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, this is approved for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Community Development Advisory Committee, I would like to recommend Brock Coats and Grace Hurlong Lovelace, each to a full two-year term, beginning November 1, 2023, ending October 31, 2025. And that is the only recommendation I have for the Community Development Advisory Committee. Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
Those are mayoral appointments, so.
Vice Mayor, I think Mr. Coats is in the audience.
Is he? Oh.
Hiding right there.
Well, you're hiding in the back. All right, standing. Okay, he waved his hand, but that's good. Any other nominations? Okay, that's it. All those in favor of the Community Development Advisory Committee, please say aye. Okay, anyone oppose? All right, see, nobody voted against you, Brock. That means you got a good pick. All right, for Greenville Health Authority Board of Trustees, this is a six-year term. Okay. I would like to recommend the Greenville County Legislative Delegation. They have selected Sylvia Travis King at large for appointment in the Greenville Health Authority Board of Trustees. As a resident of the city of Greenville, and in accordance with Act 102 of 2013, the legislative delegation has to request our concurrence. Are there any other nominations for this board? Any other nominations? Last call, any other nominations? If not, all those in favor of recommending Sylvia Travis King to this board, for the legislative delegation, please say aye. Anyone oppose? Okay, that has passed, et cetera. We thank y'all so much for the interviews and meetings and work. Thank y'all so much for these recognitions and appointments. Move to our consent agenda.
Motion, sir.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion. Move to approve the consent agenda. The clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. To our regular agenda, we have no unfinished business, but we have a first reading in a new business. Item 15A.
An ordinance to rezonate 0.33 acre of real property located on West Main Street from PD Plan Development District to MXSD Shopfront Downtown District.
So moved.
Second.
Let's move property second. All the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Item 15A passes. Item 15B.
An ordinance to rezonate 2055 acres of real property located at 300 Airport Road from IG Industrial General District to IX Industrial Flex District. So moved, second.
Property moved, clerk will call the roll.
I do have a question.
Question.
Mary Douglas, so in going to IX, in general, it's giving them more flexibility in use, in general. And the existing Humane Society is on IX property, correct? So, but they're on a lease, like they leased from the Greenville Airport Commission, that property, is my understanding. Not really relevant, but here's my question. Do we know what they're trying to do with it?
Yes. Councilmember Dow, they are buying this property, and they will have their spade neuter clinic there, as well as some other services. So in order to have the animal care use, it has to be rezoned to IX.
Okay, and this is kind of across that ravine that's between, right? So I know we've had stormwater runoff problems in that area. And if they, when they do that, I know this is probably jumping the gun on it, but all I would reiterate is stormwater's been a problem on that property. Y'all are aware of that, I know. And if they're paving in there, the tension becomes more of an issue. So as they move forward, I think, you know, we just need to be really looking hard at that.
Yes, we certainly will, and they'll have to meet all of our standards for stormwater.
Happy to have the pup spayed and neutered across, just don't want it flooding downstream. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. All right.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Item 15B passes. Item 15C.
An ordinance to appropriate $52,842 in the miscellaneous grants fund to reflect an award in the amount of $26,421 from the Bureau of Justice Assistance for Rutherford's Best Partnership Program, and $26,421 in the matching funds from the Law Enforcement Special Revenue Fund to purchase body armor for the Greenville Police Department.
So moved, second.
Sorry.
All right, any questions? Okay, chief, too bad. Clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Thank you so much, chief, for still working on those grants. Item 15C passes. Item 15D.
An ordinance to appropriate $30,718 in the miscellaneous grants fund for the FY 2023 Edward Brown Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Okay, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Thank you so much. Okay, item 15D passes. 15E.
An ordinance to annex approximately 1.14 acres of real property and 0.19 acre of adjacent right-of-way located at West Ferris Road and to provide the zoning designation of CV Civic District.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, questions? Okay.
One annexation, y'all are losing the game.
There's always next meeting.
That's exactly right. I'm thinking, clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke. Councilmember Gibson. Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Item 15E passes. Item 15F.
An ordinance to amend Section 19-3.35 Use Definitions, Industrial Uses, Section 19.3.4.5 Use Standards, Industrial Use Standards, and Division 19-7.7-2 define terms in the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville to provide regulations for crematory incinerators.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington. Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Item 15F passes. Item 15G.
An ordinance to appropriate $2,500,000 in capital projects funds through the allocation of the South Carolina State Budget for fiscal year 2324, titled City of Greenville Nickel Town Community Center Renovations.
So moved.
Second. Comment.
Comments or questions?
Comment as well.
Okay, comments? Go right ahead.
A great, big thank you is due to Representative Chandra Dillard, who sits on the Ways and Means Committee, as well as Representative Bannister, who chairs the Ways and Means Committee. This money would not come to Greenville without those two working in partnership for the city of Greenville. So I hope everybody will send out a personal thank you to them.
We'll do it.
Just want to repeat everything she just said and add to that. The Community Center of Nickel Town is an integral part of that community. It is used by the people who live there on a daily basis. We have our Nickel Town Neighborhood Association meetings there. There are all kinds of programs that run through there. With that said, it has been in need of a renovation for probably well over a decade. Kudos to this council, and thank you to all of you in that we appropriated 1.8 million of our own money to do this. And I think, quite frankly, that's set the stage for Ms. Diller and Mr. Bannister to then go to the legislature to add this 2.5 million to it. This additional 2.5 puts us well over $4 million on this project. It is going to greatly expand our ability to expand not only the square footage of it, but also the uses of it and the services to that community. So thank you, council. Thank you, Ms. Diller. Thank you, Ms. Bannister. Thank you, all of you, for this. I know that my community and the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors in Nickel Town, thank you as well.
And I'll see if I was going to take care of the money and make sure it gets spit on the right bill. Thank you for the clerk will call a roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brasington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Fleming.
Aye. Item 15G passes. Item 15H.
An ordinance to amend Section 2-333 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville to require a two-thirds majority in certain circumstances.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? Since the city manager, there are questions?
Well, I do have some comments, if I may.
Go right ahead.
And I wanted to make sure that we had a chance to address this, to just tell you why we're bringing this before you this evening. We're presenting to you an amendment to Section 2-333 of the City Code of Ordinances, modifying the uniform procedures for boards, commissions, and committees. This amendment will require a favorable vote of two-thirds of the present members of the board to approve or recommend approval of an agenda item that was recommended for denial by staff. This proposal provides the city's professional staff, who are educated, trained, experienced, and have professional certifications, greater weight in determining whether prospective projects and proposals are consistent with the city's plans, goals, and best practices within a certain discipline. The zoning ordinance does establish separate roles for various participants in the planning and zoning process, staff, boards and commissions, city council, each with defined roles. These different roles provide a sort of checks and balance system. This amendment gives staff a more empowered role in the decision-making process, giving greater weight to their specialized knowledge, perspective, and in many cases, ethical consideration tied to their professionals credentials. The burden to decide on a case and overrule a staff recommendation will now fall on the review board. In furtherance of the city's intent to promote objective and practically supported decision-making, the city's boards and commissions must now present substantial background data and resolved override of staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Questions or comments? Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl. Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, item 15I passes. Did we do 15H?
We were just completing 15H and we're ready to move to 15I.
Okay, it's got, okay, 15, I'm on the number, letter wrong, no problem, go ahead.
An ordinance to approve the naming of the new inclusive playground in Cleveland Park and to accept and appropriate $809,000 in donated funds for the construction of the new inclusive playground and a new sidewalk on Woodland Way between Garden View Avenue and McDaniel Avenue.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any questions?
I can just have just a few minutes, if that's okay?
Okay.
And we have a video as well.
Go right ahead.
Good evening. Over the years, we've had the pleasure of working on meaningful projects that have had a profound impact on our community, opportunities that have gone beyond the ordinary scope of work, that create spaces that inspire, uplift, and bring our communities together. This visionary project is representative of just that. In January of 2022, we met with Paul and Reagan Foster, who shared the story of their beautiful daughter, Brooks. Their vision was to create a place for Brooks where she could play outside with her siblings and friends, a play area that goes beyond minimum accessibility with equipment and resources that meet the needs of children with a diverse range of disabilities, both visible and non-visible, a fun, inclusive, and sensory-rich environment where all kids can develop critically physical, social, and emotional skills. In that moment, we collectively knew it was not a matter of if, but when this project would become reality. It is now my pleasure to introduce you to the Fosters and Brooks's Playground.
We have a blended family of five, from 14 to almost four, and so we are very busy at all times.
Wild times, 24/7.
Good job, Brooksie. Brooksie is our almost five-year-old, so she's four and a half and was born in early 2019. We were very excited to have an, an extra little energy in our house, but we knew in utero that she was gonna be a little different. So nervous when she came. She stayed in the NICU for almost a month, or a little over a month. And then we brought her home and, you know, there you go. We just had to figure things out, and she's been a little bit of a mystery.
She is our rare gem. She has red hair, we don't know where it came from.
Red hair, yeah.
But she has so much personality, it's just amazing.
So she's got something called pontine tachymental caps dysplasia, which is super rare, I'm sure there's many of those rare things, but she's one out of 100 in the world.
So honestly, the main thing is, as, as we, as we've gone through this journey together, you see there's other people who have their own challenges at home and they have their own special needs kids. Maybe it's different than what we have, but you're not alone.
Yep, and they're all so resilient. These kids are so resilient. We live in the city, so that's kind of where this started for us, was, man, we really want Brooks to be able to explore and be a kid. And then I now have so many friends that also have special needs kids that have different, whatever it might be, autism, or Down Syndrome, or whatever it is, of different variables that they cannot always work on the playgrounds that we have that exist or play the same that other kids can.
So that's a big deal for if you, if you have special needs kids or able-bodied kids or whatever you wanna call it, for them to both feel like they can come to this park and play. So we, I'm just, I'm so passionate about this because everybody can be in there.
So I was like, this is a no-brainer. I think we could, we could figure this out. So that's how it started. Oh, we're excited. I think the biggest one would be, there's just so much shade. I know that we all know that summers in South Carolina specifically can be very hot, but sun in general for a lot of these kids is tough and heat. So most of the playground is covered and shade structures or trees that we already have that are beautiful here, so we're excited about that. But there's just great, I mean, twirling, swinging, there's gonna be a small zip line, which we're very excited about, because I know our little ones are, feel like they're flying when they do that.
It's cool, because I looked at the renderings, it's gonna be great for Brooks, but also her sister Ellie, and it's gonna include everyone. But there's this massive butterfly that, that kind of looks over the park, swings of different types, it's just, it's gonna be really neat.
Yeah, and new picnic tables and place for everybody to be at.
Bathrooms, a bathroom.
A bathroom is gonna be big.
Changed many diapers in the back of a van before, so this is gonna be a game changer for a family.
And we've got so many other great organizations in our community that I feel like this park will service. Access, access is huge.
You don't think about that until you have a child in a wheelchair, and it's, it is, it is difficult to get around at times. So the fact that they're stepping up and helping, it's been great.
Yeah, even to get into different areas of the park, we're getting ready to change some of that. So that's amazing to have extra, I know it sounds crazy, but extra parking for handicap and then great, I don't know.
Sidewalks to get in and not have to go through the grass, boom, 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 boom.
Yeah, at the end of the day, they're, they're children, right? And so all children just wanna have fun and experience the same swinging or climbing or, I don't know, just other children and be a part of something. So that's what it is for us, is just her feeling as included and a part of being a kid as possible. We're very excited.
It's gonna be great for Greenville.
Yeah, we're gonna get this thing started, for sure.
Let's go, I'm ready.
Yeah.
And Reagan Foster is with us today, so I, I am glad that she's here to, where we can just show our sincere gratitude for your donation.
We're very excited, very excited. Thank you guys for having us.
Thank you. Thank you.
I also want to recognize, we have our, our friends of Cleveland Park, who are newly formed. Jay Anthony is here as well. And I do want to give a special thank you. I mean, once we started working on this project, there was a lot of staff that like immediately jumped in and wanted to be a part of it. So Will Young, Stacy Schaefer, who's not here, Anna Catherine Miller, Donna Carver and the PRT team, Jeff Waters, Paul Dow, and then Beth Brotherton and her team on putting together such a wonderful, wonderful video. And I'll leave you with, together, I feel like Brooks's Playground will be an extraordinary place where we all know that joyful memories lay ahead. Thank you.
That's beautiful, that, that's the whole purpose of having the parks and helping have more opportunities for communities to share with others. And the little children were just gorgeous. They were just gorgeous, made us look good, y'all. Thank you so much, we appreciate that. All right, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember DeWorke.
Aye.
Councilmember Gibson.
Aye.
Councilmember Brazington.
Aye.
Councilmember Stahl.
Aye.
Councilmember Dow.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Fleming.
Aye, item 15I passes, 15J. Okay. All right, we are down into our new business, with first and final reading. Okay. And item 16A.
A resolution to consider amending Chapter 42, Article 3, Division 3 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Greenville regarding parking, permanent parking districts.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, item.
I have one, one quick question. And, and this is given authorization to write, write the permitting, not to approve, not necessarily to approve the permitting, correct?
That's right, this is the instruction from council to the city manager's office and city staff to come back to you within a certain amount of timeframe for revised ordinance that would then do those things.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, item 16A passes, a resolution. Item 16B.
A resolution to adopt in principle the airport district plan Z11 2023.
So moved.
So moved, and probably second. Any questions, comments?
I have some comments on it.
Okay, go ahead.
So this airport district study began, the concept of it began really several years ago. The Greenville Airport Commission was kind enough to host the then-city manager for a tour and our economic development team, and the potential for this district was seen. The city graciously stepped up to partially fund the plan in partnership with the Airport Commission, and, you know, this is that visionary document of what could become of the airport district. You know, on the topic of Representative Dillard and Representative Bannister, we will need partnerships at the state level, Congressman Timmons, Senator Graham, we will need partnerships at the federal level to impact these corridors that surround the airport district. These are our high-level projects. I do also think it's going to take close scrutiny, and our team is fantastic at that, again, at our stormwater management around those properties. It is an ongoing dialogue on the commission and with the commission about stormwater issues, and as we approach our budgeting cycle next year as a council, I know it's not fun, I know it's not sexy, but it is gonna be needed to fund stormwater projects that are in our hopper all over the city, okay? Last, I want to say, I'd be remiss if we didn't mention the runway loop of the Swamp Rabbit Trail that's proposed in this study, was the Masters Program of Austin Rutherford? Did I get that right? Austin of our own planning team, it was his brainchild, if it ever gets done, I guess we call it the Austin Trail. But I also wanna, wanna reemphasize, we have certain neighborhoods that have consistently asked for connectivity to the Swamp Rabbit Trail, and that priority cannot be trumped by loops that are pure recreational but not necessarily connecting neighborhoods. I love the Austin Rutherford Trail, but I also want to make sure our neighborhoods that have been waiting for a very long time to be directly connected to the Swamp Rabbit Trail, and I'm thinking specifically about North Main, that they have that opportunity looked at before, you know, pure recreational loops are, are given priority of funding over that. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay.
I guess I'll just ditto that and just appreciate the work that Council Dow and staff is working on to try to connect District One, which is the only district that doesn't have the Swamp Rabbit Show running through it, they're trying to connect some of those neighborhoods to the trail. So appreciate it.
We were gonna say something. Well, we can have them connected, so we don't have any problem anymore. But anyways, I appreciate that, it's, it's great, and thank you, Michael, and, and Austin Loop, oh my God, I gotta think about that one. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all of them favor this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, if not, then we'll go to our next item on the agenda. Should be the last one there, but we have any staff reports.
Yes, Councilmember Fleming, I'm pleased to, as, as I think y'all know, and I think we have the best staff that anyone could ever ask for, and I'm pleased to announce tonight that the Government Finance Officers Association awarded the City of Greenville the Outstanding Achievement Award for the PAFR, the Popular Annual Financial Report that we do. And for last year's PAFR, that's an exceptional award, and I'd really like to recognize the work of our finance team, Office of Management and Budget OMB, for all of their hard work, in particular, I know this was something that Karen Crawford spent a lot of time on, in addition to also our communications team. It's, they, they don't always get to partner together on projects, but this was an opportunity for them to partner, and I can't think of an award out there that our finance team does not receive annually for the great work that they do. So I'm very honored and pleased for their work and efforts on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Karen thought she was gonna be out of there. She told me you're not going anywhere, but that's.
Not going anywhere, yes.
Have you mind if I?
Go right ahead, sir.
You talk about government transparency, boy, I'll tell you what, you look at that document, you see where every single penny is spent, and for someone who looks at other governmental bodies' budgets, I will tell you, they are code in secret, they are, they are tough to, tough to get through and to understand, and it's a breath of fresh air to see our own document that you can see where every single penny of our taxpayer, taxpayers' money is spent, so job well done.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Yes, we had a very, very successful fall for Greenville. Thank you so much to our PRT team, you know, to Will, the entire team, do just an amazing, amazing job. I can't thank enough people, because it's not just PRT, it's multiple departments that play a role in making that a very huge success for us, but I just hope you know how much you're appreciated and valued and for everything that y'all do for our city, and that goes to all of our departments that make that such a, a huge win for our community Saturday. And I don't think we have the final numbers yet, but I can say that Saturday was a record-breaking day, so stay tuned.
What a great weekend it was, for all the reasons we done was, but the thing that I was reminded of is I drove downtown on Monday, the next morning, for a meeting, and this is a compliment, I mean, it's like, it's like the festival never happened. All the work that goes into loadout and deconstruct, such a wonderful festival, it was amazing how, just another gorgeous Monday in City of Greenville, but you couldn't, you couldn't tell the aftermath of it, so that's a part of this thing.
Our teams have it now into a pot, and we are so very fortunate for our staff, they are, they are the best.
Okay, so we gonna give them a day off one day? That's all we can do, we'll sneak out.
I'm sure that I'll have no arguments from the team on that.
And I do want to say, Will, that four hours after the event, you can, you can see just a little bit of where they were. I was, I was so pleased, because they opened up a whole bunch of street, four hours after the, I said, all right, y'all, good. But anyway, but we thank you so very, very much, we thank the staff, et cetera, because we just sit up here and just spend the money, hi, all of you, et cetera, but you make us all look good, and we thank you for caring about the city of Greenville. It's a great place to live, when you have people working with everybody and trying to do everything right, et cetera. And our new CFO, she's all in here. She just came a few, few months ago, and she's already, she's already taken us, some of y'all don't know what to do with the finances, but she works with you.